I feel very far away, but I can move if you'd like.
You can stay just.
This is nice because we can see everybody.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board. This is Wednesday, May 29th to order. And I guess I could use a process observer. Love a volunteer. I'll take Cindy since I did it for her. And I asked, do we have any agenda adjustments? Do you want to add them in public or do you feel the need to?
I don't think there's a need. If we need to, we could always do it.
Okay, so at this point, I'd ask for any nominations, resignations, retirements, or correspondence from Superintendent Corey.
I have a couple, two nominations to share and then one letter from a staff member. First of all, I have a nomination for Daniel Bumbarger, B-U-M-B-A-R-G-E-R, for the position of Guidance Counselor of 2019-2020 at Hollis Brookline High School. He has his Masters in School Counseling from Assumption College in 2014. He would be at the Step 6 on the Master's scale, which would be $53,553. Daniel did a wonderful job in his interviews. I had the pleasure of meeting with him. He's coming back home. He's presently up in Vermont, but he grew up in the Pepperell-Townsan area, so he's very much looking forward to that. And one of the reasons I brought him to tonight's special meeting is because his district needs to know from us, and he needs to resign his position up there by June 1st. So it's Daniel Bumbarger, Master Step 6, $53,553.
Do you want to make a motion right now for that one? First?
Yep.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the nomination of Daniel Bumbarger for the position of Guidance Counselor at Hollis Brookline High School at the Master's plus 6 step and a salary of $53,553? Is that right? So moved.
Correct.
Moved by Cindy, seconded by Melanie. Is there any questions? There we go.
What is the anticipated total staffing for the high school guidance department? Expected or hoped to be for next year? How many? What are the total number of guidance counselors and other positions?
It will be the same as this year.
I don't know. Is it four guidance counselors?
I believe it's 5.8.
5.8?
Right, because we have 1.8.
Okay.
Then we have four full-time counselors and one, what I'll call, Department Chairman.
Is that Teresa?
And she takes students though often.
Yes, she takes students, yes.
And that, not giving any student assignments to learn, is that correct?
That's correct.
Or any other administrator?
That's correct.
Okay. And how many, how many returning guidance employees do we have from this year? Do we expect to have?
3.8.
3.8. We have the two retire.
Two openings?
Two openings.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this our second that we filled?
Yes. So we'll be fully staffed after this nomination.
And?
We'll have a 0.8.
Correct, I'm sorry.
A 0.8.
Yeah, because one person moved over to take the full time.
Oh, is that what happened? Okay.
So you still have to fill the 0.8 if this position is filled tonight?
Yep.
So this is the first guidance counselor nomination we've seen this spring?
Yes.
Is that right?
Because the 0.
Right.
One of our 1.0 positions was filled with our 0.8 position, so she was already an employee. We didn't have to bring it to the board.
Right, so you didn't bring that to the board?
Correct.
So this is the first time we've nominated it?
Yes.
And we'll be voting out a guidance counselor?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just kind of trying to remember. I don't have the minutes memorized.
Okay.
You don't? No. Did you have a question, Tom?
No, I'm just trying to figure out how that maps to prior to this year.
So keep in mind that prior to this year, our 504 coordinator was a 0.8, right?
Yes.
And now our guidance counselors are all doing 504.
Did we have five plus the 504? I mean?
No.
We only had four plus the 504, right?
Do we add it?
Try to.
We have five.
We were 5.8 prior.
Yeah, we were.
Five school counselors and 0.8 504 coordinator, and now it's 5.8 school counselors with the.
So we were five guidance plus the 0.8 504?
I believe so.
Okay. I thought, for some reason, I thought we were only four plus the 0.8 the prior year. I thought we were short one that prior year, but it's okay. Let's move on.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Would, I guess we can take a vote? All of them in favor? 5.0.
The second nomination is actually, at the last board meeting, I brought a gentleman forward for the tech ed position. That gentleman did not accept the position. So we went, we were requiring this year because of knowing it's a very competitive market that each principal sends over two candidates to the SAU for interview. So Gina and I had interviewed this gentleman via a Google Hangout, was that it? Yes, because he is from Ames, Iowa. It is Michael, I'm going to spell it, S-C-A-R-A-M-E-L-L-I-N-O. Scaramelino.
Scaramelino.
Scaramelino, thank you. He would be joining us from Ames, Iowa. He's relocating to New Hampshire, he and his wife. He would be a tech ed teacher at the middle school for the 2019-2020 school year. He has his Masters in Ed and Curriculum and Tech from Southern New Hampshire University in 2016. So he would join us with his Master's degree on Step 8 for a salary of $56,594.
Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination of Michael Scaramelino to the position of Tech Ed at Hollis Brookline Middle School at a Master's Step 8 level with a salary of $56,594? So moved. Motion by Cindy, seconded.
Seconded.
Oh, Beth, thank you. Are there any questions?
The selection of the instructor had been believed to have a bearing on what possibilities might take place related to the robotics renovations and things. And my understanding from the earlier conversation, and maybe I'm mistaken, but was that these two candidates had different views of the tech ed curriculum. Bringing this person onboard, what will that mean for how we structure the tech ed and the middle school? And are there any automatic implications as far as going forward with what was proposed when we did our walk around for robotics?
I will answer it, and then I'll turn it over to Gina because she has been involved in the process at length too. What I would say is when we brought the first candidate forward, his strength was wood and traditional woodshop, and he would have needed to expand his skill set on tech ed. The gentleman who we're nominating tonight is the opposite of that. He has a great skill set in computers, tech ed, and would need to expand his repertoire for the woodshop, is how I see the two candidates. But Gina was involved in the beginning, so I'll.
You know, I would say that pretty much sums it up. The candidate that is brought forward to tonight has a wider skill set. So I believe that he has the ability to provide a greater variety of experiences for our students based on his experience in Massachusetts, which was middle school and varied by grade level compared to his experience in Iowa, which is high school, wood, metal, a little bit more traditional. So there's just a different skill set, more skills in terms of like different materials and such. So I think, you know, I'm excited to move forward with this candidate.
But in relation to when we did our walk around and the proposal, is it likely that that proposal is going to be adjusted in any way?
I think long term, I would envision that the new principal would potentially see some, would make some proposals for the budget to plan for in the budgeting process, maybe bringing laptops into that space, but nothing in terms of the summer work of the proposal.
There was a question about whether certain pieces of equipment were going to remain or move and whether and how the space would be shared, what the time allocation, and so there was some discussion, and I'm just curious if that's changing at all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
This idea that the gentleman is moving to New Hampshire, I guess I can't really, I don't, maybe that's too personal a question, but is he definitely moving to New Hampshire? Like?
His, what he shared with us is that his wife's profession is bringing her here.
Okay.
And he has more flexibility as a teacher nationwide than she does.
Yes.
So I feel quite confident that the move will take place, and I echo Gina's sentiment that, you know, this was one of the more difficult decisions we've had to make probably in my five years as far as choosing people. And it was one of these, if we had had another position he was qualified, we probably would have brought both candidates forward.
Okay.
Is, is he going to have to get any certification or is, does he have transportable reciprocity?
So he's applied for a statement of eligibility, and I would expect that that would be fine. He holds the certification in Massachusetts. He has a different certification for Iowa, and he has the experience, so it's not as if we're bringing someone with nothing.
His master credentials are current?
Yes.
A lot of times, they're more restrictive than New Hampshire are.
Correct. The only possible snag is that with these specialty areas, the name of the certification is very specific, so it might not perfectly match. But in this field, it's an area where we can do an alternative certification where he'd be more than qualified, and I would work with him to complete that. We have, you know, a few educators in that same position.
And this is just sort of a general question with these two hires. Is this freeing up much salary money for the co-op with these two positions? I've got to believe this guy's less expensive than the retiring.
I would say he's less expensive than the retiring, but remember when we budget, we do Master Step 5, so he's a little more expensive, but I think you're going to see a savings on the guidance because that's not a retirement.
Okay.
So I think from an overall salary point of view, if I was to project right now, I think the co-op will come in slightly under salary-wise.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, so all in favor?
The next one has been kind of going on for a while, but out of respect for the individual, we've kind of allowed him to pursue this option, and he wanted me to bring it forward tonight. So this is the letter. It says, "Dear School Board members, the Music Education Department at Plymouth State University has offered Dave Umstead a one-year full-time position titled Music Education Director of Bands. He's asking us to please consider awarding him a one-year leave of absence so that he can pursue this exceptional opportunity. While it would be much less stressful for me to pass on this offer, I also know that certain doors only open once. I would like to take advantage of this rare chance to exponentially grow as a musician, teacher, and individual. The expected benefits from this professional development opportunity would be improved rehearsal conducting techniques as a result of direct college-level performers and advanced music literature. Growth as a conductor through teaching of conducting classes. Enhanced awareness and reflection of best practices via the critique and advising of future educators. Exposure to new perspectives and ideas from another institution. Absorption of knowledge from collaboration with veteran college professors. Increased professional connections in the region. Up-to-date familiarization with modern college culture. Countless more unforeseen insights and lessons that will improve my teaching. Hollis Brookline High School is a very special place to me. I invested long hours and many years building the music program to its present status. If given this opportunity, I would most certainly do anything in my power to facilitate a smooth and successful transition for the 2019-2020 school year. Thank you for your consideration, and again, it's Dave Umstead." This is a very difficult one. Dave has done remarkable things for us. I think he is the face of our music program and what he's done. In our CBA, it does allow for this request so that he can pursue this option. In my dialogue with Dave, though it's no guarantee, you know, his intent is to go there for a year, enhance his skill set, and then return to us. But as I said, there's no guarantee on that. He also is well aware that the board could turn him down and that he would be here next year. I'm going to support this because in my short time here, what I've seen David do has just been remarkable, and I think he will bring back so much more. He has kind of assured me that he has somebody that he believes will be able to come in and fill his role for a year and do an exceptional job. And I think for Dave to give that praise to anybody is a very high compliment. I'd be happy to take any questions from you. I know it wasn't necessarily anticipated, but we didn't know if Plymouth State was going to extend an offer or not.
From the wording of that, there is a potential replacement or substitute already identified, and I don't know, are you viewing this as a package deal?
I'm not viewing it as a package deal because we'd have to post it and go through the process.
You have to post it?
Yes. What Dave wanted the board to know that is he is aware of some former Hollis Brookline students, plural, that are finishing up music education programs to become teachers. So he's very familiar with a couple individuals that I think he would strongly encourage to apply.
And you have, the terms of the leave of absence, he doesn't have to commit to coming back, but we have to commit to allowing, keeping the position available or just keeping, rehiring him even if it's not in the same position?
We would commit to rehiring him, so the person coming in would know it was a one-year position.
But if you got somebody in and they were just amazing, if we had another place, you're not, you're not.
We would have to offer him a position.
A position.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yep.
That was one question I was going to have, but the other question was just kind of piggybacks off that, you know, at what point next year, if he made it to say, at what point he would have to notify us?
April 15.
Because I assume it would fall, but I wasn't sure.
He has to notify us by April 15.
I think, okay, perfect.
I'm going to speak just in favor of this. Maybe it's an assumption, but knowing the commitment he has made to our school and the effect that he's had on the overall culture here, I think we owe it to him.
I completely agree. I mean, it's such a loss for our kids in a lot of ways, and the kids who are working with him because they love him and he loves them, but it's an opportunity for him, and we do owe him that. I agree. So do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes, we need to approve it.
So you have to tell me. So I don't have one written, so can I get a motion to approve a leave of absence for one year for David Obsted?
Yep.
Is that it?
That'd be fine.
Beginning July 1st?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Are there any other comments?
What's the timeline for having to get someone in? Are we, are we behind the curve right now?
We'll post probably Monday, and then I'm sure that Dave will assist in the interview process, and I'm sure Dave will make himself available as a resource or phone call away to whatever candidate comes onboard.
Where's Bill Hinkle these days?
Assistant principal.
Yeah, last I knew, he was an assistant principal, yeah.
I know, but I heard he was looking to get back into music, but I didn't know, I didn't know if he had been in touch at all.
I haven't talked to Bill, but we'll post it Monday, and we're doing very, very well in terms of candidates and in terms of numbers in all our districts, so I'm comfortable that this will be out there. And the other thing is, it's related to any of your specialists, they're often, a lot of these jobs open, so I think you'll attract some people.
Any other comments, discussion? Okay, all those in favor? unanimous 5-0.
Okay, that's it for, oh, the only correspondence I just wanted to share. I presented the other night to the Budget Committee regarding the robotics and the expenditure of the funds. They made a formal motion and supported that position 5 to 2. The two people who voted against it supported the proposal for the space and what was going to happen, they had concerns just with the process because it wasn't something that happened early in the budget season and this and that. But overall, it was very well received, and I know Cindy attended. I would say it was, it was a very affirming meeting that they wanted to move forward with.
Very positive, and I understood, you know, their concerns. I think all of us had that concern as far as how it was transpired and the concern that it could be, something like that could happen again to the budget side.
What are next steps on that?
Next steps, we will come to the, this board on the 15th, and we'll have an updated drawing of the space. We'll bring back Gina's curriculum proposal, and we'll ask this board for action on it as well. If it was passed, then we would set up a timeline and prioritize the steps to get the room as ready as possible for students first, robotics second.
Just a favor, I missed the last meeting, I tried to catch up on it, but if the information could come out as early as it's available, even if it's before the packet?
Okay.
That would give at least me extra time to.
Yep.
Understand it.
Okay, that sounds good.
Great.
So that ends, now I'm done with correspondence, nominations, and recommendations.
So that leaves us with public input?
Mm-hmm.
And is there anyone, is there anyone from the board who would like to get up as a member of the public and make public input? Seeing none, we'll move on to discussion, and we need a field update, and I believe that's you.
That is me. In your packet, you received the three bids that came in last Friday for the turf field. Those same bids were posted in the packet, so they are all public, and they were provided to the Budget Committee as well. I'm kind of going to run through each of the proposals and then ask for, or make a recommendation. The first bidder was Hollis Construction, and they bid with Lighton White, so the two of them were coming in as a partnership and a joint venture. They gave us a base bid, which I had emailed the 214 pages of the bid packet to the board. That base bid is, I think the easiest way for me to understand it is what I'll say is everything inside the fence. You know, every component that's inside the fence for the field, because the bleachers, the parking, all of that is outside the fence. So their base bid was $1,873,000. We asked to have four alternatives priced.
Could you say that again?
Excuse me, $1,873,000. We asked for four alternatives. One was a gravel parking area, which would be about 30 spaces up near the field. Their first bid, Hollis Construction and White Incorporated, priced that at $50,000. Alternative two was putting in the scoreboard foundation for the new scoreboard for the field. That is all the work below the ground. That was $16,000.
16?
16.
1-6.
Pave the access road to the upper area rather than just doing gravel. If we were to pave that whole area, that was priced at $40,000 for this bidder. And your light pole bases, which are just the bases, were priced at $77,000 for that package. So the total package, including the four alternatives for Hollis and White, was $2,056,000. The second bid that we opened was from Quirk Construction Corp. They priced their base bid at $1,457,000. For alternative one, which is the gravel parking area, their bid was $30,000. For the scoreboard foundation was $11,500. Alternative number three, which was pave access road and upper area, was $39,000. And their bid for the light pole bases was $65,000. Bringing their total bid for all the alternatives and the base are $1,602,500. Last bidder was Rad Corp, also known as Rad Sports, and that is a partnership. Their base bid was $1,789,000. They bid $51,000 for the gravel parking area. For alternative two, which was the scoreboard foundation, they priced that at $16,000. For the paved access road in the upper area, they priced that at $43,500. And for the light pole bases, they priced those at $109,000, bringing their total bid up to $2,8,500.
$2,8,000?
What we did is, we had a conversation with Ty and Bond. I talked with them Tuesday morning. They were, sent the bid packages on Friday afternoon as the board was, and they have worked with both Quirk Construction and Rad Sports. They were not familiar with Hollis Construction and White Incorporated. They had no reservations about the two bidders that they are well-known to and felt that they would deliver quite a project. They had worked together as the installer and the engineers at Neshoba Valley Technical School, and both Quirk and Rad came with extensive references for the various fields. So what I am looking for from the board tonight is, first, I'm recommending based on what I know today from Teagan-Bond and the bid prices, that I'm looking for authorization from the board to move forward with Quirk Construction to see if we can come to a contract. That contract would be developed by myself, Kelly Seeley, and Greg Im. Greg is our attorney with Drummond &amp; Woodson, who has been bond counsel for the whole project. I worked with Greg on the Hollis Primary School project. He created that contract. And there are some pieces that we want to further discuss with Quirk and would come back to the board after that contract was drawn up, and we had those questions answered to our June meeting. And at that meeting, I would like to have a contract for approval as well as a timeline so that we could kind of know exactly when work would start. That will coincide just by total chances, the last day of school, so the goal would be to, you know, probably hopefully get them in the following Monday and move forward on that. One of the pieces that, as much as it's been delayed, I think this will allow us between now and June 15 to tie up any other loose ends. As you may or may not be aware, we are still waiting for the DES environmental wetlands permit. We see no worry about that, but it hasn't been issued, but we're expecting that shortly. And that's just the nature of the projects. Teagan-Bond says that their estimation is the state is kind of overwhelmed right now because there's so much construction going on, so that's why it's kind of sitting there. It is in process. We check the website every day. So I'm looking for a motion that would allow Kelly and I and Greg to contact Quirk tomorrow and begin working on a contract within, what I would say, an up to amount, which is the amount that the voters passed, the $1,600,000. Again, with the goal of coming in under budget and utilizing some of the private donations to potentially do some of the other work. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Do you have a pre-formulated motion?
Well, I think I have to change it from contract agreement to contract negotiation, right?
Yes.
Okay, I do. You want to put the motion on the floor, and then we can discuss? So I need a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract negotiation with Quirk Construction Corporation in an amount up to $1,660,000, sorry, for the turf field project at the Hollis Brookline High School contingent on successful verification of qualifications. Per Article 3 of the invitation to bid, source of funding is the turf field bond article approved by the voters at the annual meeting in 2019. at the annual meeting in 2018.
What was the dollar amount in that motion?
One six sixty.
So moved.
Moved by Tom.
Seconded by Beth.
So discussion of this of Quirk, that's, that's the motion that's on the floor.
Well, just a more general question. Is this, uh, what do you view as being negotiable?
I would like to get some definites around some items, and I'll give you a big one in New Hampshire whenever you do anything that involves digging, and that's ledge. So I wanna make sure that our attorney is comfortable with the language around ledge, if it's discovered, because that can quickly escalate costs.
Isn't that detailed in the, in the bid pack, the type, because they took the plugs, and it says that information's all available.
Correct. It, it is very detailed, but I've learned that if, if you don't get it in the contract or some agreement on that, when you hit it, it's gonna, now you're gonna stop the project to figure out how it's gonna be paid for. So I wanna, I wanna get that on ledge. I, I wanna make sure that we structure the timeline so that before we move to any of the alternatives, we would beyond, be beyond knowing if we were gonna hit ledge or not, because...
In your mind, th- this price includes the cost of hitting ledge. Would you, would you agree?
In my mind, yes.
Okay.
But I've learned not to...
No, no, I just, but...
That's part of the negotiation, you wanna clarify that?
If you're reading the, the bid pack the same way that I did...
Yeah, and, and I, I will, I also have already emailed the company on that, and their interpretation, based on the boring holes that were done and everything that they have, they don't anticipate that. But it's just one of those things that I know Greg is going to wanna have in there.
But price, the bid prices themselves are viewed as firm, correct?
Correct, mhm.
What, what is the strategy with the additional items?
Once we get through this, this stage of knowing if we're going to encounter ledge or not, then I think we need to prioritize the, the, the items.
Well, they're already prioritized by, according to the big package.
Correct. In terms of where we believe, I think the gravel parking area is something that we need because we're, we're experiencing parking issues at the high school, so we'd be picking up 30 or 40 spaces, which would help our day program. And I've done enough with parking areas and repaving and that to know that, uh, that's a pretty good price for a gravel parking area. In terms of the, the scoreboard, we've done enough scoreboards that that, that falls into a, a, a price. And then the paved access road, I think that there has been some discussion between Teagan Bond and my office regarding what's the best way to do the light structures. You know, do you put them in, or do you wait until you know you're gonna move forward with that? Because there's pluses and minuses on both sides, so like, that alternative to me would be something we would probably, again, discuss before moving forward.
I guess my question is more, um, and you answered it regarding the light, but at what point in the process are decisions made about the adders?
I think that we would know before the school year started what we, what we were doing.
Would those, each, would each one of those come to the board, or is that decision that would be made by the committee?
Next, um, board meeting, with the contract, I'd also like to bring forward a, which we used in Hollis that worked very well, a charge for the Facilities Committee, so that they would have authority generated from the board, and Cindy sits on that committee, to make decisions based on the information they get. And I have no problem if, if the board wants to add a second member to the Facilities Committee. It's just more, there'll be day-to-day issues that we'll have to address. The other piece is that, as you recommended, Tom, we have reached out, and I've spoken to a couple local gentlemen who may become the, what I'll call, project overseers. And that would be a separate contract, but I, I would say a very minimal contract.
These, these added things in the dollar amounts, do you have to, at the time you sign the, a contract with a builder, do these items have to get rolled in, or is there an expiration on those additional offers?
Well, that, that is something I'd like to work with Greg on, because what I'd like to do is establish timelines. Because I really, once we get through what I'll call the, the major excavation and encounter or don't encounter ledge, then my, then I actually have enough to do the, the entire project that we talked about.
So are you concerned that if we vote on this tonight and, and have Quirk Construction be the, the main bid, you know, that we're accepting, not accepting, we're accepting contract negotiations? I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, are you concerned that, like, we're giving the field project and all these additional things? Or would you like these additional things to be separate so that they'd be almost like, potential to have separate groups bid on them in the future, in case we're unhappy? Is that...
I, I don't have a concern so much as a, a lack of understanding of what will be negotiated. And I'm trying to understand whether or not, where these were as adders, and it wasn't clear to me in reading the, the bid request, whether they were things that were go- that you're going to negotiate a bundle, or whether you're gonna negotiate them individually? And if you're not doing it as a bundle, it wasn't clear from the quote whether they have to all be accepted upfront as a package deal, or whether they can be taken à la carte, and, and if so, what the expiration is. So I was just trying to understand what Andy's expectation is, and therefore, what needs, what are the open questions in the negotiation?
Sure, I gotcha. I'm just trying to figure out.
I think, uh, the reason we did the bid the way we did is the $1,457,000 represents a turf field playable, playing games on it as soon as it's ready.
With the fence.
With the fence, so everything inside it. We, we were concerned because we are seeing cost escalation for any construction project that, you know, almost 18 months ago is when the voters passed this. So we wanted to make sure that we bid things out, that we could decide what to do and what not to do, to make sure we stayed under that. So, working with Greg, part of our strategy would be to decide which of these alternatives we're gonna do and have the answers for you at the next meeting. Because at the same time, I know that, you know, the, the lights were something we always talked about as private donations. So we, as a board, need to have a discussion around, do we look at the light pole bases as part of the lights? And if we do, then we, we kinda said to the voters, we weren't going to do those with this project. They were gonna be privately funded. So are we out raising $65,000? If that's the case, I'm fine with that, because that money, now we have a real dollar amount finally to talk to folks about what it would cost. And that would bring the pro- project in at $1,537.5, which is below what the voters approved. So I think, I think the goal would be to answer and give you a greater comfort level at the June 15 meeting for the entire board.
Do we know, um, do we know anything about the right-of-way question?
The paperwork has been completed and provided to both sides from the standpoint of our attorney and, and their attorney, and I would expect that to be wrapped up by the next meeting too, so I...
Because that need, that does need to be concluded before, before a decision is made about breaking ground, I would assume.
Yes, I, I would say it's, from my understanding, again, it's a matter of, it's clarified on paper. It just needs to be...
Hasn't been accepted yet.
Well, not only that, but it has, it's part of a deed, so it has to go and be registered as well.
Okay.
Uh, but I think I'll have an answer on that, and I would hope to have an answer on the wetlands. So I really think June 15th, we could finally be done and kinda, you know, knock down some trees, as Holly says. She's, she's volunteered to bring her own axe.
Seriously, the chainsaw. Well, I'm ready to go.
Are there any other questions?
Who gets the revenue from the video of the chainsaw?
Hey, hey. I'm really good with the chainsaw, you don't.
I didn't say it was gonna be bad.
So more questions about cost? And does, does Quirk have mechanisms in place to help prevent these cost overruns? I heard you talk about the ledge, but there may be other things too, and I'm wondering what they have.
Well, typically, when, like, I'll use the Hollis Primary School, when we have entered into a contract like this, their base price is what they're going to stick to. And occasionally, sometimes things go well, and some, certain areas come under, and other areas might escalate. And that's kinda what the Facilities Committee will do, is they'll monitor the entire prog- project, and then we'll provide regular updates to the board, so you're not doing the day-to-day, but you're doing, you know, regular updates.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, so, can we have a vote? All those in favor? Okay, process recorder. Anything else? There's nothing else?
No.
We're good? You did good. Great. That's good. Um, do you have any else, any else, Cindy?
No.
Okay, and is there anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Tom, seconded by Beth. All those in favor? And we are outta here. Thanks. Can we get Mark to turn that off?
He comes right now, he watches in his office. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Ann.